Good evening and thank you for viewing the October 6 regular meeting of the Arcata City Council. Before we start, the city council just met on one closed session item. There's nothing to report out at this time. City council meetings being held is a teleconference in response to local efforts to reduce the COVID-19 virus. New cases continue to rise in Humboldt County. The city urges residents to get vaccinated as our best defense against the virus and the personal and economic impacts it has in our town. If you wish to make public comment during the meeting, either at the two open public comment periods or for an individual agenda item, there are two ways to do so. If you're logged onto the Zoom, click on Raise Your Hand on the right-hand side of your screen. When it is time for public comment on the item you wish to speak on, the clerk will unmute you. You will have two minutes to comment. You can also access the meeting by phone. Call the number at the bottom of the screen. Enter the meeting ID also at the bottom of the screen. Press *9 on your phone. This will raise your hand. When it is time for public comment on the item on which you wish to speak, the clerk will unmute your phone. You will hear a prompt that will indicate your phone is unmuted. You will have two minutes to comment. If you would care to, please join me in the flag salute. All right, may we please have a roll call?
Mayor Watson.
Here.
Vice Mayor Atkins Salazar.
Here.
Councilmember Schaefer.
Here.
Councilmember Goldstein.
Here.
Councilmember Matthews.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. You know, we have, is it in the next item, recognition of Russ Forsberg for his 30 years of service on the Forest Management Committee? All right, here it is. I found what I was looking for. "City of Arcata recognizes Russ Forsberg for his 30 years of service on the Forest Management Committee. Whereas Russ Forsberg has served on the Arcata Forest Management Committee for 30 years, having been appointed on April 1, 1991, and serving as Chair from April 1, 1994 to February 2,014. And whereas Russ Forsberg, registered professional forester, Cal Forestry graduate, and ARA appraiser with American Ad Credit, has provided the city with solid advice pertaining to forest economics and real property acquisitions, which helped bring credibility to Arcata's community forest program through his due diligence and attention to detail. Whereas Russ's contributions to community-based forestry are far-reaching and include assisting with the development of the 1994 City Forest Management Plan, the 2021 Forest Management Plan update, and his work on forest conservation easements throughout the Pacific Northwest, including his work with the Pacific Forest Trust. Whereas as longtime committee chair, Russ always fostered an inclusive atmosphere, leaving room for everyone to contribute and set a standard for respect that empowered public and stakeholder involvement in Arcata's public forests. Whereas Russ's connection to the Humboldt State University Forestry Department as a forestry advisory committee member helped expand student and faculty involvement with Arcata's forest program. And whereas Russ was a mentor to city staff and was always available for advice, his contributions to Arcata's forest management will leave a lasting legacy as they are embodied in the Arcata Community Forest Management Plan and the Arcata General Plan. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the city council and staff of the City of Arcata, the community members and visitors who enjoy all the benefits of the Arcata community forests, and the many forest management professionals in the Redwood region wish to thank Russ Forsberg for his 30 years of extraordinary and dedicated service to the City of Arcata and for making Arcata a better place to live. We will miss seeing Russ on the second Thursday every month at 7:00 a.m.." Dated today, October 6, 2021, signed by myself, Mayor Brett Watson. And, yeah, would Russ like to say a few words?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor Watson. I appreciate the recognition. And also appreciate the city's involvement with the forest for so many years. I've been lucky to serve with a lot of wonderful people over the years. Dr. Dell Thornburg, Dr. Lowell Diller, Dr. Jerry Barnes, and of course, for most of my time on the committee, worked with Marc Andre. It's been a wonderful community and collective effort. I also would like to recognize the current committee members, which are Mike Furness, Danny Hagens, Dennis Halligan, Jack Naylor, and Yana Valakovic, and Ken Hoffman. And also would like to point out that Danny Hagens and Jack Naylor have been on the committee much longer than I have. So it's a long-serving committee, and it's been a great privilege for me to be able to share my expertise and opinions. I would like to leave you with this thought. Old foresters may fade away, but forests always continue to grow. So thank you so much for the recognition, and it's very much appreciated.
Thank you, Russ. Do we have some staff members, former staff members that would like to comment?
Marc, did you have something? Oh, go ahead, Emily.
Just really, the Environmental Services Department and Forest Management Committee really want to thank Russ for his many years of service. Our community members serving on city committees are essential for the functioning of our city government and guidance to the city council. And 30 years on a committee is above and beyond, and Russ, I am glad that I was able to be a part of one committee meeting with you in my short tenure with the city. But our former Environmental Services Director, Marc Andre, will also be able to say a few words as he has worked decades with you. So thank you very much, Russ, for your service, and best wishes to you.
Thank you, Emily.
Thank you, Emily. Hello, everyone. Hello, Russ. I just wanted to wish you well and thank you for all you've done for the City of Arcata. Amazing dedication to serve that long on the committee. I really enjoyed our interactions, and especially when we got out in the forest and actually kicked the dirt around a bit. You've left a great legacy here in the city. I just want to thank you for that. And truly, you were a mentor to staff and myself in a lot of ways. I learned so much from you. And there's something I want to just add, because you're a mentor to a lot of people, including your own daughter, Elizabeth Forsberg Hardy, who got appointed to the Board of Forestry later this summer by Governor Newsom. Arcata high school student who went on and got a PhD at UC Berkeley in environmental sciences, I believe. But I found out she filled the public seat that I had vacated when I turned out, when I left the Board of Forestry 18 months ago, I think. So it was open for a while. But anyway, you've left a legacy in many ways, and you know, your daughter is carrying on in your tradition. So anyway, you'll be missed. Really want to thank you. And hopefully, we'll stay connected over the next 30 years.
Sure we will.
And we had one more speaker, Yana?
Good evening, everyone, members of the committee, city council, and great to be with you, Russ. I just really want to acknowledge and appreciate how much you've done for the whole profession and for the city. You've always been there, and I don't think anyone can appreciate how much time and effort and dedication and sort of encyclopedic memory you have about what we've done, when and where, and why, and you know, always up to help, you know, benefit the citizens and the community of Arcata, and just always bringing really resourceful ideas and innovation and a dedication that I think will be unmet in many respects. It's been a true pleasure to be your colleague and your friend, and I know we'll get to continue that. And I'm thrilled, like Marc says, to be able to continue to work with your next generation. Your daughter's amazing. And you know, I hope that you find great success in your future endeavors. So thank you for all that you've done for everyone.
Thank you, Yana. I very much appreciate it.
I forgot to add that your daughter, Elizabeth, also was an intern with the City of Arcata, the Environmental Services Department Forestry Program. So I wanted to add that because that just shows how Arcata's little program, little forestry program has broad, you know, influence in the region and in the West and all over the place. So that was just one more connection to Arcata.
Thank you, Fu, for signing that, Marc.
Great. Thank you again, Russ, for all of your service. Next, we have recognition of October 2,021 as Community Planning Month. Whereas the community planning, whereas community planning is a dynamic and collaborative practice that promotes sound land use, economic prosperity, environmental stewardship, and a high quality of life. Whereas community planning is a principal way that all residents can be meaningfully involved in making choices that determine the future of their community. Whereas community planning has proven vital to creating resilient communities that can quickly and efficiently respond to hardships such as the COVID-19 pandemic and unprecedented wildfires. And whereas the full benefits of planning require public officials and residents who understand support and demand excellence in planning and plan implementation. And whereas the local Redwood Coast section of the Northern California Chapter, American Planning Association, promotes planning at the regional level through educational programs and events. And whereas the American Planning Association and its professional institute, the American Institute of Certified Planners, endorse October as National Community Planning Month as an opportunity to highlight the contributions that sound planning and plan implementation make to the quality of our communities and environment. Whereas the celebration of National Community Planning Month provides an opportunity to publicly recognize the participation and dedication of local private and public sector planners, planning commission members, and other community planners who have contributed their time and expertise to the improvement of the City of Arcata. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the city council of the City of Arcata that the month of October 2,021 is hereby recognized as Community Planning Month in the City of Arcata in conjunction with the celebration of National Community Planning Month. The council recognizes the many valuable contributions made by professional, community, and regional planners of the City of Arcata and the County of Humboldt, and extends its heartfelt thanks for the continued commitment to public service by these professionals. Signed today, October 6, 2,021, by myself. And that's that one. Next, we have recognizing October 2,021 as Domestic and Intimate Partner Violence Awareness Month. Whereas domestic and intimate partner violence remains a serious social issue across all economic, ethnic, sexual preference, and age categories. And whereas domestic and intimate partner violence violates an individual's dignity, security, and humanity with a systematic use of control through physical, emotional, sexual, psychological, and economic abuse. Its victims can face life-threatening injuries, emotional challenges, and death. And whereas children who witness domestic violence are at greater risk of lifelong behavioral problems, alcohol and drug abuse, and becoming abusers and victims in their adult intimate relationships. And whereas in 1977, a group of local women started Humboldt Domestic Violence Services to provide lifesaving emergency services to battered women and their children, and to develop public policy around domestic and intimate partner violence as well as human trafficking. And whereas through public education and outreach programs, HDVS enlists a diverse array of allies, agencies, and communities in changing the mindset that domestic and intimate partner violence and human trafficking are acceptable. Only together as a community can we change the cultural norms that perpetuate human trafficking, domestic and intimate partner violence, and the stigma attached to its survivors. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the city council of the City of Arcata recognizes the month of October 2,021 to be Domestic and Intimate Partner Violence Awareness Month. The council celebrates HDVS's upcoming 45 years of effort to improve community safety by breaking the cycle of domestic and intimate partner violence. Dated today, October 6, 2,021, signed by myself. And next, we have Report by Commission Committee, the annual report from the Transactions and Use Tax Oversight Committee.
Jeff, can you unmute yourself? There you go. Yep, perfect. You are.
Okay. Can I be heard?
Yep, we can hear you well. Thanks, Jeff. Yep, go ahead and start. Thank you.
All right. I'm Jeff Knapp, Chair of the Transactions and Use Tax Oversight Committee, or TUTOC. And we appreciate this opportunity to address the council. I'd like to start with a quick summary of how our committee was created in case any current council members aren't acquainted with its history. In 2008, the Arcata Police Department had seven empty full-time officer positions, primarily due to inadequate funding. Also, due to lack of funding, Arcata was unable to consistently maintain the conditioned function of many streets and sidewalks. A citizens group was organized to create a ballot measure for a 3/4% transactions and use tax earmarked to correct these problems. However, due to a concern an earmarked tax might not get the required 2/3 majority vote, a compromise was reached to have the proposed tax be a general revenue tax, which would not require a 2/3 majority. The Measure G that passed required creating our TUTOC Oversight Committee, staffed by seven citizen volunteers to see city budgets adequately funded, both infrastructure improvements such as streets and sidewalks, and public safety, including police. Our committee's members are appointed by the council. We meet every six months and serve on staggered four-year terms. We currently have a vacancy on our committee, which we understand the council is working to fill, and we're making our own efforts to encourage qualified persons to volunteer. As to police staffing, in each of our past meetings, Chief Ahern has described a highly competitive statewide market for trained law enforcement personnel. As of September 30 of this year, from a 2019 historical high of filling 29 sworn officer positions, we are now down to only 20 due to city budget hiring freezes, competition from other police departments, and a disability injury. Unfortunately, this repeats the 2008 serious police officer shortage that, in large part, caused Arcata's citizens to vote for the transaction and use tax. At our August 26 committee meeting and in a recent email I received from the chief responding to questions I had, the chief reported that until their officer recruiting effort succeeds, his department can only provide what he describes as core services and at a reduced response time. Core services are things like responding to threats of public safety, like an earthquake, response to calls for service by police, criminal investigations, and traffic enforcement. This means delays for other officer-initiated activity for many crime and quality of life violations, excuse me, such as car burglaries, vandalism, street narcotics dealers, and camp dwellers, and other less serious violations of the law. As to our committee, we encourage the council to budget for restoring adequate staffing levels in the police department and to maintain the levels of appropriation for the engineering departments for street improvements. We also encourage the council to continue making decisions regarding other general fund expenditures as if the transactions and use tax did not exist, and focus revenue from this tax on public safety services and road infrastructure services. Should revenue projections for this tax exceed the current budget, we recommend the council first focus on funding police services at the level needed to fill all officer and staff positions, and then align the remaining funds with the 1/3 public safety and 2/3 streets targets before using additional funds for other general fund purposes. And thank you, council, for your service and your time, and I'll try to answer any questions you have about our committee.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from the council? I have a question or two. You mentioned in your committee recommendation of future general fund expenditures, second-to-last paragraph, that council and staff need to ensure TUT monies are used for those purposes because that's what the citizens of Arcata voted for, those purposes being public safety and street infrastructure. So I was just wondering, are there concerns that we're not using money for those purposes? Are we, do we have money coming out of that tax that is not used for street infrastructure and public safety?
The tax was not earmarked for any particular use. So the revenues from the tax go into the general fund. Maybe Andre can address that.
Sure. Thank you, Jeff. So Mayor, to add to Jeff's comment, that is a general, it's a general revenue source, and it is currently being used for public safety expenditures and street expenditures. I believe historically, the committee has highlighted this use to just pinpoint that council does have the authority to use it for other means, if necessary, as part of our budget setting. But historically, it has been used for public safety and streets and has aligned with the committee's recommendation.
Go ahead.
I mean, I'll just add, especially since we have new council. Originally, when the measure was passed, it was a 1/3, 2/3 split was the conversation, the community at the time. And so that's something that I know the committee looks at very closely. And there have been years that that has ebbed and flowed depending on cost of healthcare, cost of staffing around policing and the paving needs at the time. Although I know Nate was on the call, our city engineer would tell you, we always need more paving dollars. So we have tried to maintain that 1/3, 2/3 splits, and we are getting back towards that ratio. But there have been years over the course of the tax that we haven't hit that directly. But otherwise, I think we have always spent the total money between the two expenditures at some split.
Thanks. And then it goes on to say, "Committee is recommending the council first focus on funding streets to bring the ratio more aligned with the 1/3 public safety and 2/3 streets target before using the additional funds for other general fund purposes." And it sounds like from the report that right now you estimate it's about 50/50. Public safety, 50%, street infrastructure. So I just wanted to clarify that.
So currently, as budgeted, it's 55% streets and 45% public safety. And trying to move that needle to where it's 66% to streets and the remainder to public safety for that 2/3, 1/3 split. So we're not quite there, but we're pretty close in the ratio.
Thank you.
I wanted to add that as far as the TUTOC committee is concerned, I think the thing that we would underline is the chief's report that of 29 sworn officer positions, only 20, he's only able to fill 20, in large part because there's intense competition for officers all across the state.
Great. Well, thank you so much for the report. Any questions or comments from council? Doesn't look like it. Do we have any members of the public that would like to comment on this agenda item?
I see no public comment on this item.
All right. Let me see. So how much input does the TUTOC have on which streets get paved? I just noticed it's listed in here on our paving schedule like this. Do they weigh in on which streets are getting paved?
We get a regular report from the streets and paving folks as to, in fact, rather detailed as to what they've been doing and what they plan to do.
Okay. Great. Well, that's all for me. Appreciate it.
They're not reviewing the engineering recommendation per se on which streets and condition, really focused on the funding.
Got it. Like where the money, so they can see where the money's going?
Yeah.
Okay. Great. All right. Thank you so much for the report. Really appreciate it. Really appreciate all the work you and the entire committee does for the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we have early oral communications. This 15-minute time period is provided for people to address the council on matters not on the agenda. At the conclusion of all oral communications, the council may respond to statements. Any request that requires council action will be set by the council for a future agenda referred to staff. Speakers addressing the council at this time may be limited to minutes. All other oral and written communications will be heard at this meeting under Agenda Item 11. Do we have any members of the public that would like to comment on an item not on tonight's agenda?
I see no early oral communications, Mayor.
All right. Next, we will move on to the consent calendar. All matters in the consent calendar are considered to be routine by the city council and enacted in one motion. There is no separate discussion of any of these items. Discussion is required. That item is removed from the consent calendar and considered separately. At the end of the reading of the consent calendar, council members or members of the public can request that an item be removed for separate discussion. A, approve the minutes of the city council meeting of September 15, 2,021. B, approve the minutes of the city council meeting of September 21, 2,021. C, biweekly report on general warrants. D, declare continuation of the local emergency related to the coronavirus pandemic. E, adopt ordinance number 1551, ordinance of the city council of the City of Arcata amending Title VI, Chapter IV, Section 6566 of the Arcata Municipal Code, reauthorizing the public, educational, and government fee on state cable video service franchises operating in the City of Arcata. Way of reading of the text and consent to read by title only. F, adopt resolution number 212-19, a resolution of the city council of the City of Arcata amending the class and pay resolution, International Union of Operating Engineers Local Number Three to reflect new positions, code enforcement, permit technician, and facilities and maintenance technician, Food Works. G, adopt the successor memorandum of understanding between the City of Arcata and Arcata Police Association for July 1, 2,021 through June 30, 2,024, and authorize the mayor to execute. To execute. Adopt resolution number 212-20, a resolution of the city council of the City of Arcata amending the class and pay resolution for Arcata Police Association, reflecting the negotiated salary increases for term of the successor memorandum of understanding effective retroactively to the pay period that includes July 1, 2,021. H, adopt resolution number 212-21, a resolution of the city council of the City of Arcata establishing and authorizing supplemental compensation and benefits for management and confidential employees to reflect revisions and additions. Two, adopt resolution number 212-22, a resolution of the city council of the City of Arcata amending the class and pay resolution, management, mid-management, confidential, and appointed employees to reflect a 4% salary increase effective retroactively to pay period that includes July 1, 2,021, and future increases for fiscal year 2,022, 2,023, and fiscal year 2,023, 2,024. I, award a construction contract for the 2,021 Arcata paving project to GR Sundberg, Inc. in the amount of $1,416,634.25. Authorize the city engineer to increase the contract amount by up to $141,663.43, 10% for a total of $1,558,297.68, to allow for any unforeseen contingencies and additional work as necessary, and authorize the city manager to execute all applicable documents. J, approve the purchase of a Solair 185 portable air compressor for environmental services and award purchase contract to Cresco Equipment Rentals and Affiliates in the amount of $23,272.25, including tax and freight, and authorize the city manager to execute all applicable documents. K, approve proclamation and recognition of National Long-Term Care Residents Rights Month, October 2,021. L, approve amendment number one to the subdivision agreement for the 30th Street Improvements Project and authorize the city manager to execute amendment number one. M, adopt resolution number 212-16, supporting North Coast Railroad Authority's request to railbank the rail line from Willets to Humboldt Bay and opposing the transportation of coal by freight to the port of Humboldt Bay. N, adopt resolution number 212-18, authorizing the destruction of certain city records maintained by the city relating to the departments of city manager, property and special projects, personnel, city clerk, environmental services, and finances permitted under Section 34090 of the California Government Code and the Secretary of State's Local Government Records Program. Do we have any members of the council or staff that would like to pull an item off the consent calendar?
I did have a request from some constituents to pull N.
All right. I did speak with, yeah, that's fine. We can just pull in. So do we have a motion to, or do we have any members of the public that would like to pull an item from the consent calendar?
I see none.
All right. Do we have a motion to approve the consent calendar, minus item N?
I move that we approve the consent calendar, minus item N.
All right. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
All second.
Motion is second. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. So I did talk with, I think it was Casey Evans was her name, and went back and forth with her. I did also speak with our city manager today and got more details about what we were getting rid of. And I believe I addressed Casey's concerns. The, all the items that are for city committees, they're basically old membership applications for people that applied to committees. And then there was like other documents that mentioned, and those documents would be like if we sent them a letter saying, "Thanks for applying to the committee," or if they left the committee, "Thanks for your service on the committee." So that seemed pretty safe. I felt like to get rid of it wasn't anything pertaining to what the committees were actually doing. And then the other thing she specifically mentioned was talking about study sessions and special meetings. And I don't, I don't think we were getting rid of any pertinent information for those either. All their agendas and stuff will still be online. Is that correct?
Yeah. So at study sessions, you're not taking action. So the city would retain all records of action taken by the council. So if you had a special meeting where you took action, there would be minutes for that, and that's and that's retained here at the city. The interesting piece about it is that, and as the email that I think all of you received really rightly points out, you know, we instituted sort of online record keeping for a lot of our, starting with the council, then our planning commissions, at the time Historic Design Review Commission, and then moving on to the committees. So we do have sort of this electronic file, which is where 99.9% of, you know, anyone who's looking for past minutes really do, at this point, go to our website. But any actionable items by the council or by a committee are retained. And otherwise, we really just follow the state protocol and our records retention programs.
Thank you for that clarification.
All right. Are we, is everyone satisfied with that? All right. Can we please have a motion to approve Consent Calendar Item N?
I'll make a motion that we approve Consent Calendar Item N.
I'll second.
All right. We have any public comments? Seeing none. We have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Next, we have old business. Consider Resolution Number 212-17 to decriminalize entheogens in Arcata. May we please have a staff report?
Yeah. Thank you, mayor and council. It's recommended tonight that you consider a resolution here in Arcata that would basically declare that the investigation and the arrest of individuals 21 years of age and older involved in the adult personal use, cultivation, and possession of entheogenic plants and fungi not be a priority for the city of Arcata. As almost all of you recall, and I know that council member Matthews has reviewed, on July 21, the city council directed staff to review the proposed resolution from Decriminalize Nature Humboldt designate, design to decriminalize adult personal use of entheogens, and to obtain a recommendation from our public safety committee. This resolution was reviewed by staff, and we had considerable back and forth with a small working group from Decriminalize Nature Humboldt, and have come up with language that is agreed upon sort of between the staff and that working group to bring before you tonight here at the city council level. Just as a little bit of background, psychedelics were broadly banned under the 1970 Controlled Substance Act. More recently, many scientists in places such as Johns Hopkins University, New York University, UCLA Medical Center, and have conducted smaller studies that suggest the use of several of these plants and fungi guided by trained professionals really do have the potential to relieve many mental health illnesses and struggles for individuals. In 2018, the Food and Drug Administration granted psilocybin, a breakthrough therapy designation or status, which should support additional research now and the potential approval for medicinal treatments of that particular constituent. Amidst what is a potential health benefits of entheogens, there is a cautionary note about the strength of impairment that is often experienced by these users. And we have heard from a few community members about that concern, that without supervision and support, or in the wrong setting, people can have what have been described as terrifying experiences, sometimes with lasting effects. Following the proposed resolution, in your packet tonight was a list of resources if you were interested in really delving into sort of the potential benefits of each of the potential entheogens that are of interest. From a policy standpoint, the council reviewed last time SB 519, which was introduced in early 2021. It was pulled by the author at the state legislative level in the end of August, just really, I think, prior to the recall election. There were several bills that were pulled that were not going to be considered by this legislative session. But prior to that, it had been approved by the Senate as a 21, 16, and three abstention vote, and it was making its way to the assembly. That particular bill would have made it lawful to possess for personal use or facilitated and supported use of several of the constituents that are before you tonight, also working just with the authorization of 21 years and older. The bill also would require the California Department of Public Health to convene a working group to research and to make recommendations to the legislature on the regulation of these substances. So I do believe that this is a bill that will be coming back before the state legislation, legislature next year for continued discussion and potential vote within the assembly. The Public Safety Committee did review the resolution proposed by Decriminalize Nature Humboldt and accepted public comment on July 28. And there was a motion, that the motion was to support the resolution with the stipulation that it is for personal and private use, and that it include an education component. And the motion was passed on a 301 vote, one abstention, and one member was absent that evening. So I know that a lot of you have done a lot of research, so I was going to hold my comments short, but I'm happy to answer any questions. There are a few specific things that were added to the resolution, and we can pull that up if you want to look at them more closely. But I think compared to the version that you saw originally, the two most, I'll say the three kind of most significant changes, one was the addition of the words 21 years and older that wasn't in the original one. The second one is just recognition by this council based on being sort of a college town here in Arcata, that this resolution does not extend to the properties that are owned or leased by the California State University System. And the group really supported reaching out to the district attorney, and we worked on that language around what the district attorney would support within that resolution as well. And so they did send the language of the resolution to her, specifically the recommendation around how we would forward things to the district attorney. And her response, just paraphrased, is that in essence, you know, she is prosecuting based on cases that are coming to her by local jurisdiction. So provided that, you know, we are following the policy, that then those are the cases that she's going to be reviewing. So she really didn't see a lot of conflict in cases that would be coming to her around this resolution. I do think we have significant public comment, looking at our attendees tonight. So I'm happy to answer questions because we did do a lot of back and forth, or to let you discuss.
Do we have any council members that would like to comment or ask any questions?
I just want to say that I was not a member of the council at the meeting where this was brought to the table, but I was in the audience. I was very impressed, overwhelmed, and touched by all of the public comments. And thank you then and again for sharing your experiences, and I look forward to hearing from all of you.
I wanted to add that I was one of the people that was hesitant the first time around, and I felt like it was just coming at us fast, and perhaps the public wasn't fully aware of what we were doing. And I just wanted to be sure that the public had a chance to digest the information and that it was a good fit for our community. I also requested, you know, I wanted the, our police chief and public safety committee to also be able to recommend or be able to live with, you know, the changes that would be made in the resolution. And we also asked for community engagement and education, which has been happening pretty much nonstop since that meeting. So they've done an excellent job in educating and engaging with our community. So I really feel that our community should be aware of what is going on. And I've, to this point, only had one person really argue against it, and all of the many other correspondents that I've had have been in support of it. So I feel like we have given it, I feel like Decriminalize Nature has done a great job of doing their, their work engaging the community.
I also want to thank Decriminalize Nature Humboldt. I have seen you at every farmer's market that I've been to. I've talked with you, and I've seen you interact with the community. I appreciate the things that you're doing at the Arcata Ballpark for further education.
Yeah, I don't have much to add. I think that Decriminalize Nature Humboldt has done a really excellent job around community education. I know they've been sharing with us, you know, the feedback and the numbers of attendance and things that they've been having at their events, as well as the farmer's market, and it's just really impressive. So I feel really secure in knowing that our community has a great educational resource and support system around this. And I think, I mean, from our last meeting too, I just continue to support and really, yeah, think, I know, as Karen said, we're going to have a lot of public comment, I'm sure. So thank you all for, in advance, for everything you're going to share, and yeah, all the hard work that's gone into this.
I'll throw my hat in too. I just, yeah, I want to say, I talked a lot at the last meeting about this. So I think a lot of people already know where I stand, but I just want to thank, you know, Decriminalize Nature for being so wonderful to work with and just very receptive to the changes that wanted to be made, and, you know, just helpful in implementing them, and just has been wonderful meeting with them and working on this. So I know they're all here listening, so thank you.
One more thing. As a mother and as someone that was raised, you know, at the height of the Just Say No to Drugs campaign, you know, sitting in elementary school with the list of, you know, drugs, I just really want to appreciate how far the science has come, and I really appreciate the science-backed research that folks have done. It's been a lot for me to unpack personally, just from, you know, my age and, you know, where I am, but folks have done a great job.
Yeah. I also appreciate all the work that's been done by research scientists and, you know, also just the acknowledgement that if, you know, people use too much, that it can have harmful effects. And it's one thing that I'm not really seeing in the resolution so far, is there's no guidance on dosage. But there is, you know, I believe that what a lot of the people are talking about to support this are, were in support of a microdosing. I know we did hear some feedback at the last time this came before the council that higher doses were beneficial for different kinds of experiences. But I guess the safety is a big, still a big concern of mine. So I just suggest that, and I'm just saying this now so everybody can think about it while we listen to all the public comment, that we add two wherethes. One is something like, whereas it is recommended users seek out guidance by trained professionals. That's, you know, basically the exact, you know, language that's recommended by research scientists at Johns Hopkins University and Harvard UCLA Medical Center. So yeah, something like, whereas it is recommended users seek out guidance by trained professionals. And another whereas that, you know, I like the very last sentence on the first page of the background discussion. It says, "Without supervision and support, or in the wrong setting, people can have terrifying experiences sometimes with lasting effects." So I just don't want to kind of, I don't know, blur over the fact that, that, I don't know, I just feel guidance and supervision is needed. You know, I worry about people without any experience, you know, having, having bad experiences, I guess. So those are my comments. And other than that, you know, I like, I like the resolution. I've, you know, read it through. I like the new language that's been added. Yeah. So with that, we will take public comment.
Okay. Our first four public comments are going to come from the Working Group Committee in order. They'll be Danielle, Taylor, Skip, and Jen.
Let me just say really quick, so we're going to do two minutes a person, right? Yeah. We're doing two minutes per public comment, and just double checking. And, you know, we did hear a lot of public comment the last time this came before us. And I know tonight, a lot of the user, or a lot of the people participating, you know, you might have the same thing to say as others have said before you. So just in the name of the, you know, efficiency of the meeting and moving this forward, the faster we get through this item, the faster we can move it forward. I'll just say that. So if you, if you have something to say, if you'd like to express your support, just feel free to, you know, when you get on the mic, just say, "I agree with the previous speakers." So I just, I just want to suggest that, just in the, in the name of time. All right.
All right. Danielle, go ahead and start.
Hi. I'm Danielle, Lead Organizer of Decriminalize Nature Humboldt. I first want to start by saying thank you so much to the committee or to the council for your kind words and your support. It means so much and makes my heart so happy. We put so much work into this. I understand the concerns of people taking too much and maybe getting overwhelmed by the experience of a strong psychedelics. But what we have been doing is trying to teach people how to take these in a good way and in a safe way. And with decriminalization, we will have more abilities to teach people how to take these in a good way and provide safe spaces for people to take these in a therapeutic way. But decriminalization is the first step. And limiting it to trained professionals is really going to limit access to these medicines for a lot of people. And as a community, and especially with the establishment of Humboldt Psychedelic Society, we are able to provide the education that is needed and the support that is needed to the community to be able to take these in a good way. So I guess that's all I wanted to say. I was planning on saying other stuff, but I do want to keep it short and allow time for others. But yeah, again, thank you so much. And we have worked, you know, so hard with the city council, the city manager, and chief of police, and we thank you for collaborating on a resolution that everyone is happy with. And I graciously ask for your yes vote to Decriminalize Entheogens in Arcata. And yes, again, thank you so much.
Thank you, Danielle. Go ahead, Taylor.
Good evening, mayor, vice mayor, city councilors, our city manager, and chief of police. I just want to say thank you so much for so much of your communication, your time and energy in working on this resolution with us. I really felt like, you know, we were all working together on this. It didn't ever feel like an us versus them. And I just want to say thank you so very much for all of your openness to communicate about this. Under the directive of the city council to educate and gain community support, we have collected over 330 letters of support, of which I have 270 here in my hands that we've been turning into the city council. You know, we've collected these at our tabling at almost every farmer's market except for one. We skipped out on one rainy farmer's market, but we've been there every Saturday. We've had two educational events with speakers and films that we've shown that garnered a great deal of support from the community. And I want to take a moment to thank all 330 people who took the time to come and sign one of these letters or to write their own letter, and to all of the people who wrote the many, many emails that we've heard so much about that we will never be able to count, but we've heard from the council that they have received many, many emails of support. So thank you very much. We have also received a great deal of support and thanks around our educational materials that we're providing at these events. As Danielle said, we are talking about the safe use of these and a lot of our materials that if you come by our farmer's market table, you can see. And I did also, on that note, just want to make a quick reference to Section H of the resolution that states that the city of Arcata acknowledges the use of entheogenic plants and fungi for health and spiritual being, and can benefit from knowledgeable support such as elders, mentors, facilitators, and community familiar with entheogens. And I just feel personally that this kind of proper support for working with these medicines, it's that there are countless members of the community here who are ready to support these works.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you.
All right. Go ahead, Skip.
All right. Thank you, city council, for your time and kind words. So we have been doing a lot of work, as you've seen, educating the community. You know, I just want to point out that we do intend to, even after the vote, continue to provide support and education to the community. We will be, you know, in the way of the Humboldt Psychedelic Society. We plan to continue tabling, tabling the Arcata's farmer's market, continuing to do our educational events, and we are starting different support groups. First, we intend to start an integration circle, regular every month, that would provide a more close-knit support structure for people looking to integrate or receive support for challenging experiences or transformative experiences, or really just create, provide a safe space for people to receive that support. It is our hope that the Humboldt Psychedelic Society becomes a pillar in our community and serve the community for years to come. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
All right. Go ahead, Jen.
Good evening. I just wanted to echo the gratitude that I have as a member of Decriminalize Humboldt for you guys taking the time. I can only imagine how busy you are with everything else going on in the world right now, and we really appreciate it a lot. Tonight, I'm here, I shared my personal story at a prior meeting, but I work in the field of addiction and trauma recovery as a holistic specialist. And part of the work that I do... And part of the work that I do is integration of psychedelic experiences for clients who typically have been going out of the area. And I've been doing this for over five years. We work with people in recovery from addiction, with veterans, with first responders. And I've seen so many miracles. And there can be a learning curve, so I'm honored to make my commitment to this community to oversee the development of the integration circles that will be open to all community members for free. And not only will we help carry people through their experiences so that they can use them to make positive life changes and reach their goals on their healing journey, but also to provide the education that is the concern of all of us so that people are using these in the therapeutic, safe, and correct ways that this resolution is intended for. So I look forward to finally being able to bring my work that I see so many miracles happen with into my own community where it's so needed if we are able to pass this tonight. Thank you.
All right, next speaker is Brianna.
Hi. Good evening, my name is Brianna. I'm a former HSU student, and I graduated in the spring of '20 with a bachelor in psychology. On the topic of HSU, during my time spent studying, there was a recurring topic that came up in the majority of classes while discussing depression and anxiety, which was psilocybin. This is because we commonly spoke about antidepressants. The effects are similar with these different treatments as they reduce levels of depression and anxiety. Professors and students alike acknowledge the heavy amount of research and agreed that psilocybin is undoubtedly a very useful tool in treating mood disorders. Personally, I've known several people who microdose psilocybin and they very quickly saw a decrease in mood dysregulation and mental disorders such as depression and anxiety. These are also people who had tried for years to find the right antidepressant and had even gone through up to five different antidepressants. And very shortly after starting microdosing psilocybin, saw improvement in their symptoms and overall mood. In the perspective of a recently postpartum mother, I've seen many women frantically searching for something to help them feel better because their antidepressants don't work. And I've heard several moms suggest microdosing. 10% to 20% of women deal with longstanding depression after having their baby. And I think it would be wonderful to see more women be able to make that decision to use entheogenic medicine so that they can enjoy the fleeting moments with their children. As I mentioned previously about antidepressants, I do believe that pharmaceuticals have their time and their place. However, I also believe that it should be our basic human right to choose plant medicine on our healing journey if we so wish. I think it would be in our community's best interest to decriminalize the use of entheogenic medicines. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jen, you're next. Go ahead. Go ahead, Jen. We can see you. Oh, you just muted. There you go. Give it a try. Nope. Not hearing you. Let me just make sure it's not us. Well, it could be us. No. But I can hear her on Zoom. Jen? This might not work, but go ahead and try. Nope. Jen, we'll go to the next speaker and we'll come back. Our next speaker will be Cameron. Cameron, go ahead and unmute yourself.
Hello, thank you so much. Can you hear me?
Go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Just about. Yep, we got you.
More loudly, perfect.
No, you're perfect.
I live in Arcata, obviously, and I am a full-time care coordinator for a holistic wellness and psychedelic integration provider. They only provide ketamine treatments to clients suffering from a wide range of mood disorders, including depression, anxiety, PTSD, and bipolar disorder. Most of our clients have tried many, many different forms of treatment, including all the SSRIs that you can think of and have had no success. So mostly we treat treatment-resistant depression. And while ketamine treatments have been successful, the relapse rates are extremely high. And I do think that ketamine is not the ideal treatment for treatment-resistant depression. I do think that the current research that's being done and has already been done has shown much better evidence for psilocybin-assisted therapy for treating such disorders. So there's that component. And then I also just want to say that part of Decriminalize Nature's mission to decriminalize rather than legalize entheogens is extremely important insofar as it will help us restore and evolve modern communities and individuals' relationships with nature. And by doing so, keeping these sacred plants and fungi safe from profit-motivated private companies who may tarnish the integrity of these relationships that can be fostered and improve the lives of the people in our communities. I think that Decriminalize Nature's mission to decriminalize rather than legalize is extremely forward-thinking and responsible. And that Arcata has the potential to be the first example of the way that fostering these relationships between sacred plants and fungi, between them and individuals and their communities can happen. And that approach is the way that we will be able to help so many people in this world, in this modern world.
Thank you very much for your comments.
Thank you.
Okay, Jen, go ahead and try to unmute yourself and try again.
Can you hear me, guys?
We can.
Hi, thank you. So my name is Jennifer Flores, and I'm a volunteer with Decriminalize Nature in Humboldt. And I am currently training to be a psychedelic integration coach. And what that means is I will be able to hold a space, a safe space for the community, and help them process anything that comes up. And so definitely creating safety for the community is definitely one of our top priorities. And we will be making integration circles where we can come and talk about our experiences. And I think that will definitely bring the community together and make us much stronger. So thank you so much for your time, and I support decriminalizing entheogens. Thank you.
Thank you, Jen. And if there's anybody else that wishes to make public comment on this item, go ahead and raise your hand now. Oh, a couple more. All right. Our next speaker will be Samuel, as soon as he comes over. Almost here. Samuel, go ahead. Can you unmute yourself, Samuel? There you go.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yep.
Hi, I'm a California resident, and I just wanted to tune in and say that I agree with all the previous sentiments that everybody has spoken. And I also wanted to say, just very briefly, that I've been taking psychedelics for the past seven years, and I found them incredibly healing with addressing all sorts of things within my own life, whether it's unpacking familial trauma, ancestral trauma, personal life trauma, just all sorts of things. I've found psychedelics to be incredibly healing where no other medicine could be healing. And I am just such an advocate, and I am really appreciative of the Humboldt Psychedelic Society for all the work that they've done, and I hope that the city council makes the right decision today. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Our next speaker is Connor. Go ahead.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, hello, council. I'd just like to say, coming from a familial history of alcoholism, cocaine abuse, and a personal history of narcotic cocaine and alcohol abuse, as well as depression and antisocial behavior, I'm confident in the causal link of my self-administered and solitary experiences with both psilocybin mushrooms and my suric acid diethylamide, with my concurrent recovery from addictive relationships, as well as my current work to mend my troubled familial and other interpersonal relationships. I firmly believe these entheogens, with the aid of reasonable education and opportunity to integrate experiences through community or personally with a therapeutic setting, can be of unparalleled personal and communal benefit. Humboldt County and Arcata particularly, I have found to be hosts of mindfulness with regard to these substances, and I think present a fertile opportunity for the integration of entheogens into open society. With regard to dosage, I think it isn't a surprise to say that nobody would choose an overwhelming experience. And education about dose, as well as such guiding principles within entheogenic communities, as appropriate set and settings, if provided, will effectively address what concerns are validly present with regard to misuse of these medicines and the potentially overwhelming states people may unwillingly bring about within themselves. I strongly encourage decriminalization of entheogens in Arcata.
All right, thank you, Connor. Go ahead, Ping, unmute yourself. Ping, can you unmute yourself? There you go.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Yes, thank you so much for the time supporting this resolutions. And I just moved to Arcata, and I'm a professor and teaching at a university near San Francisco. And I teach holistic medicine. I just wanted to make a few comments. And the wonderful comment is supporting this ethno-medicine, which has come from different indigenous traditions. And for sustainability's perspective, I think it's so important that supporting those medicines has lost for so many centuries by all those governmental decisions called witchcraft, all the different things called upon. And another support I want to share with you, I've been teaching this course for many, many years. I see this scientific supporting and the tremendous effect on those people who experience a mental, emotional, and spiritual issues and illnesses couldn't treated by any modern medicine, but has great effect from these great plant medicines. And also, from another perspective, I think Arcata is a great city to become a leader of this country and become leader of the community to forward-thinking because the medicine has such many different aspects which beyond our scientific knowledge today. And there's so much beyond our comprehension of a human mind. So therefore, we have to respect this intelligence of the plant, allowing the plant to become a part of who we are and allow our human to choose that as a part of this journey for inspiration, for healing, for transformation, for connecting to the humanity in many aspects. So that's why I fully support this beautiful resolution. And I hope and honor for you supporting that as well. And vote for yes. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ping. Dr. Norris, looks like you'll be the last speaker.
Hey, hello, everybody. Thank you very much. It's been, I just want to say, it's really been an honor and a pleasure to work with everybody there. Sorry, I'm looking on two different screens here, so I apologize if I'm looking up there. Thank you, Karen. Thank you, all the city council members. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Police Chief. You've all been really great to work with in this process. I just want to kind of let you know also, Seattle just passed, as you might have heard a few days ago, 9 to 0 unanimous vote, so that's pretty great. Grand Rapids, Michigan, just passed not too long ago. You have a really strong team out there. All the people that are doing all the education out there. It's been really beautiful to see how we've all kind of coalesced in this community. I do want to say, in regards to the recommendations, I really appreciate Taylor's point that in Part H that talks about elders and other community members that can be involved with this without necessarily being professionals or trained professionals because at this point in time, a lot of the trained professionals aren't really understanding the inner experiences. And also, we had some concerns in other city attorney's offices that if a city council member really speaks about dosages, it could put them in some sort of legal challenge. So that's again where it's really great to kind of allow the community that's really growing there, do the education, which they're already doing, to really talk about starting in small doses and things like that. But really excited to hear that you're bringing this to the table. Thank you, everybody. It's been really a pleasure to work with you all, and I look forward to continuing to work with the education team out there in Arcata. Support this bill, please. Thank you.
All right, thank you. We have at least one more. Go ahead, is it Jenny or Jeannie? Go ahead and unmute yourself now.
Hello.
We can hear you. Go ahead. Perfect.
Okay. My name's Jenny Stupanian. I am a criminal defense attorney, and I am a former Humboldt public defender. I thank you for being here. This community means so much to me, and thank you for allowing me to speak. I have quite a bit of experience with clients with psychiatric illnesses and mental health illnesses. Plant-based medicines can treat, to a significant degree, quite a bit of mental illnesses, depression, PTSD, addiction. But the problem has been the law. The problem has been that it's been illegal to do studies in this country. Other countries, it's not the case. It's a lot like marijuana 30 years ago. In 2006, our Supreme Court unanimously held that the government was required to permit transportation, distribution, possession, and use of plant-based medicines for religious organizations. But science has been blocked. Clinical trials have been blocked, and they've been inhibited. This is because ayahuasca, peyote, psilocybin, and cannabis are all Schedule I drugs classified by our federal government as having no medical use and being highly addictive. But that classification happened many years ago, and science has taught us differently. There's two universities that are coming out with groundbreaking results that are paving the way for psychedelic medicine. Johns Hopkins University came out with a 2016 study that had 51 clinically chronic cancer patients that also suffered from depression. They did a five-week trial and took psilocybin. There was an 80% decrease in their depression during the five-week trial, and that 80% decrease lasted for six months after.
Thank you very much, Jenny. You have two minutes, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Thank you.
Steven, go ahead. All right. I see no other public comment.
He still had like a minute 45 left. Just kidding. All right. So we'll bring it back to the council. If you have any more comments from the council, questions?
Well, I just wanted to add, because I do want this to be something that we are all comfortable with the language. And so I was kind of looking, I think that Item H does highlight that a facilitator, somebody that is trained or understands it. But I would feel maybe comfortable either adding, like you said, Mayor, another whereas statement or adding maybe to the end of that last whereas statement. I really liked the phrase that one of the speakers used, therapeutic setting. And so maybe something along the lines of, whereas improper use or overconsumption of entheogenic plants and fungi can result in negative effects and requires risk-reduction strategies and education to ensure safe consumption and should be taken in a therapeutic setting with proper guidance. Or something along those lines, if that would make you more comfortable with that statement.
I think that's fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
Can I just ask a quick question? Are we leaving therapeutic setting up to interpretation? Or does it have to be a therapeutic facility that's legally designated as a place where therapy happens? Because I think that the Psychedelic Society is offering therapeutic spaces, but I'm not sure if they're actually designated as a therapeutic space. So I would hate for that to be all of a sudden considered not acceptable.
Well, I guess my suggestion would be, since my sense is that we were we're all probably on board with it as it was, and adding something would make it better. Maybe if we could, in the recommendations, we could move to add that unless our attorney sees an issue with the definition of therapeutic settings. And then we just then we just leave it out and leave it as is?
I mean, I feel like it's pretty open to interpretation, therapeutic settings. So I don't, you know, I think if, yeah, if City Attorney Diamond comes back, we can, we can change it, but I don't feel like we're like, you know, putting them in the corner or anything.
Yeah, just as long as therapeutic settings isn't like a legal designation, that's, I'm totally fine with it.
Yeah, I was more interpreting it as, you know, a way that, in a setting that is healing and guided by a person, which I think, then, you know, yeah, does leave it up to interpretation, hopefully. But again, attorney question, that's a good point.
And I'll provide an attorney answer, which is, it depends. You know, I mean, obviously, the most precise thing to do is to define everything in a document, but I think in some respects, this is really a sort of policy guidance document. And I think it's providing guidance to your police department for how to approach this activity in the community. And I, I think that allows a certain level of sort of common sense use of what a therapeutic setting is, because a therapeutic setting to one person may be different to another. And I think ultimately, what the city ought to be interested in is protecting the safety of, of the community. And, and if it's being used in a safe manner in what is a therapeutic setting to one person, but not to another, I, I think the, the overarching intent of this resolution is that law enforcement would take no action. It would not be a priority situation. And the converse is true. What somebody may consider therapeutic may actually not be in the best safety interest. So maybe there should be some intervention. So I am very sorry I gave you a lawyer's complicated answer.
Thanks, Nancy. I would just, I mean, to me, I'm fine with the language the way it is. It, you know, that sentence does say use requires risk reduction strategies and education. And I think that that kind of sums up the concern anyway, in my opinion. And I think because all parties were comfortable with the, this language before we came here tonight, I would feel most comfortable just moving forward with what we have.
Yeah, I mean, I feel like, to me, it's a medicine. I guess that's the way, I feel like that's the way it's being portrayed to us. That's kind of the argument. And, you know, like with any medicine, you would get it from somebody like a doctor who would give you, you know, guidance on how to take it. When you get the pill bottle, it might even say, you know, don't do these things, or here are some bad side effects that might happen. And I just, again, I just don't want to glaze over the potential risks. I mean, I feel even now the language, you know, risk reduction strategies, I mean, that's pretty, that's pretty soft to me, you know, I mean, my, yeah, you know, the other language that talked about, there was just more, let me see if I can turn it up here. You know, people can have terrifying experiences sometimes with lasting effects. Nobody's denying that. So I just think we owe it to our constituents who, you know, we're kind of sending this message out. In a sense, people are going to feel like this is, this is, you know, us telling them it's okay and it's safe. So I just want to make sure that we're being responsible with the safety of our citizens and just really giving a clear message out there, that there is, you know, potential downside, and you need to be very careful.
I mean, I really, I do appreciate that, and I think that, you know, everybody wants the whole community to be safe with this. But I would say, you know, yes, I get my antidepressants from a doctor with instructions, but then I take them in my, my home every day without any sort of supervision. And so I think that as long as there's education and support saying that people need to take it in a therapeutic setting, I mean, their therapeutic setting could be alone in their bedroom as long as they've had previous education. And then also just to, I, I think we have a fear, and rightly so, that, you know, things can go wrong. But we also have alcohol that is completely legal in our society and completely acceptable, and things can go horribly wrong with alcohol. People can overdose, they can need their stomach pumped, all sorts of really bad things can happen. We have huge problems with alcoholism, but we're not talking about, like, we're not afraid of that in the same way. And so I think there's a risk with anything, but I really strongly believe in the education that our community groups are stepping up to provide.
And I just, oh, yeah, I just wanted to add to, to that piece, just that it, it's hard to say that, yeah, it should be prescribed by a doctor because the way that it exists now, you know, you can't do that. And, and so that, you know, this makes that okay, but it also makes, you know, people who want to have certain experiences, religious experiences, it's not just the medicinal side, I think, that has been portrayed to us as well. I think it has also been the religious side, and the speaker that also talked about, you know, psilocybin has been used in ancient Native American rituals for hundreds and thousands of years. And, and so it is an ancestral, you know, medicine. Yeah, I was trying to not use that word, but I mean, it's an ancestral, you know, rite of passage for a lot of cultures as well. So I, I don't, you know, yeah, to, to say that it has to be something that is, you know, it's medical is, is not necessarily, I think, the spirit of the resolution either. So, but.
Yeah, just to clarify, I wasn't saying we need to, you know, call it a medicine or get a doctor's approval. I just, again, wanted to make sure we were being clear with people that, you know, there is a, you know, there's always, there's always risk, there's a potential downside. You know, everybody wants to point to all these scientific studies, like, look at all these great scientific studies people are doing, and everyone, you know, feels like it's okay and you should try it. The same people doing those studies are also saying guided by a trained professional. So we can't just take part of the study that we like and then leave the rest of it. And I'm, I'm actually okay with, you know, I, I totally agree with Sarah earlier about, you know, we can, it's, it's kind of covered in there, we don't necessarily need to say a trained professional. But, you know, again, I just think we need stronger language that's clear to people that there is, there is a potential risk and there is a downside. So do we have any more comments?
I just, I don't know, I just, I want it to be something that we're all comfortable with before we move forward, but I mean, I'm, I'm ready to move forward if that's where we're sitting right now. With this language addition or not, I'm not, I'm not picking it up quite yet. So I just want to, you know, anybody else want to throw in on that, I think now's the time, but we could take it out too and just go for it.
Yeah, I'm willing to, I'm willing to vote yes with the language addition you suggested, and it's currently up on the screen. So my, absent of that, I'm a no.
No, it's a resolution, so it would be, yeah, you would just be adopting the resolution. And you would be adopting Resolution 212-17. Do you have it in front of you? Okay.
So I move that we adopt Resolution Number 212-17 to decriminalize entheogens in Arcata with the present language changes.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations, decriminalized nature. Definitely put in a lot of work and it paid off. Next on the agenda. Consider the amended City of Arcata 2021 and 2023 legislative platform. May we please have a staff report?
Yes, thank you. Mayor and council, so at your last council meeting, you had updated your legislative platform, and during that council meeting, we had a public speaker, Colin Fisk, who quickly and succinctly read a long list of suggested improvements to the legislative platform. So I think a couple of you graciously asked him to email that to us and then bring it back for your consideration this evening. So what be, what is before you in track changes version? And I actually put a revised version, sorry for the small print, but in the track changes version on your, on your dais tonight, and I can pull that version up for the public to see her in just a minute. Are those revisions? And I just wanted to walk through those revisions with you, and then you can have your dialogue and discussion and decide. I'm going to go ahead and pull up, because we had two things. First, we had the suggestions from Colin Fisk that evening, and then subsequent, over the weekend, there has been some correspondence with Zero Waste Humboldt. And I know you all received a blue folder item today, so I have made some suggested, if, if anyone is interested, I did hear from a couple of you that were interested in trying to incorporate some of those tonight. So we have come up with some suggestions as that, on that as well. Go ahead. Did, oh, no, okay. All right, so working our way through the legislative platform, the first recommendation that came from Colin Fisk and the Rocker Group, hopefully I can see all markup here so we can, is under the traffic, roads, highway, and transit. And it was new number six, support legislation that increases total and proportional funding for active transportation and transit. Your staff is recommending that you approve that addition to the legislative platform. The next one was under water and wastewater, support legislation for funding to repair, upgrade, maintain existing critical water and sewer infrastructure. Recommendation is to support that. And then we get into solid waste and recycling, so let's, we'll come back to those. The next was under environment and climate change. It's the new number seven. Nope, that's not one of Ruckers, Colin Fisk's. So that's the bottom two, seventeen and eighteen, under climate change, support programs that provide funding and other forms of support for the full build-out of EV charging station networks, and support legislation to address historic and current environmental injustices related to pollution, land use, transportation, and resources. The staff recommendation is to add those to your legislative platform. So maybe we'll stop with those four additions to see if you had any discussion, interest or not interest in adding those.
I'm fine with all the changes proposed by staff, proposed by Rocker.
Yeah, I appreciate those additions. Thank you. Okay, so they also asked for two deletions from your existing legislative platform. Those are both under the land use, planning, affordable housing, historic preservation section, and they were number two and three. And it would basically eliminate our recommendation to try to maintain local control over those land use decisions. Staff advises that you, that both of these remain to support your council's local control. We did suggest that you add language on number two that says, oppose legislation that would impose state mandated development standards or procedures that are contrary to the City of Arcata general plan or local land use policy as adopted or proposed. So if you had things that were coming before you for consideration, that we would not just automatically send out a letter opposing something that was, you know, in support, that would have been supported by that policy, that item would come to you again as an individual item for council consideration. Again, it's the will of the council, but the staff recommendation is to leave those in.
And I would prefer to go with the, the staff recommendation, I just have the mindset that we should maintain local control whenever we can.
And then they had one addition to this section as well, which is support legislation that streamlines walkable infill housing development, and the staff recommendation is to leave that, to add that to your legislative platform. Seems like we're good with that. Okay. And then do we, would we like to review, I'm assuming this, the zero waste? And then we can, I can't see all the public comment potential here, so, and we're going to do eight things at once, we really are. All right, so starting under solid waste and recycling, and I will pull up their actual letter, I hope I will. I had it all here. Okay. So the first item on Zero Waste Humboldt was support extended producer responsibility, manufacturer responsibility, and product stewardship. So a lot of what they, what they suggested was sort of additions to some of our current legislative platform goals. So we tried to work in more specifically the language into some of these. So on that specific, on what I'm going to call their number one, we have put that in actually as a new one, number seven, support legislation for extended producer responsibility, manufacturers' responsibility, product stewardship. We also added in what is called the right to repair. This has to do with the right to repair electronics, it don't have to go back to a specific dealer. And so we added that in as sort of an extended manufacturer responsibility into number seven, and their suggestion on truth in packaging and advertising into this new number seven. So we did kind of combine three of them. Staff's suggestion is to combine three of them into one. I will have to be honest, this all came in within the last 24 hours, so we have not been able to vet this completely back and forth with Zero Waste Humboldt. So this is the first time that they're seeing this tonight, and so hopefully they will make comment on it too. So, but that's where we fit those three in. Support local recycling, so market development and the local circular economy. We have added in what's our, our existing number three, and so it'd be support legislation encouraging active development of markets for recycled and reused goods and promoting the circular economy. I'm hoping covers that item. Number three, supporting waste prevention and reuse, infrastructure, and business development, I also think is captured in that number three. And then number four, on single-use plastics. So we had, our existing number two was to support legislation that reduces plastic waste, so we added in their language, comma, supports comprehensive restriction on single-use plastic products and packaging, and provides funding and support, which was already in our number two. The support truth in packaging and advertising, we talked about, support carbon farming. So we have added carbon farming to one that we have put in, then down in our environment and climate change. And so this is really around minimizing methane emissions associated both with food production and waste. So staff has suggested some language, a little bit expanding on what Zero Waste Humboldt has provided, the language read, support legislation, and other efforts to minimize methane emissions associated with food production and waste, and encourage carbon farming, i.e., whether it's adding riparian areas or composting in the soil, things that make that soil rich and the ability to sequester carbon at a greater level than standard farming practices. Let's see, their last one here is support electronic recycling, and so we added that in as its own, support legislation to increase electronics recycling, public education, and approved methods for handling household hazardous waste. So pretty much just as is on what I'll call their number seven. Their number eight was right to repair that we added in earlier. And then the last one of theirs is number nine, is to not support any energy recovery, zero waste to landfill, and waste to energy. So staff talked through this a little bit quickly, right? So, but part of the theme of the legislative platform, I've always said, is it should be universally supported by the council. And in our discussions, what, you know, what we came to is that today, waste to energy conversion might be a little bit more nuanced than what was originally adopted. So I think really it was looking at our existing number four that does encourage some, you know, conversion of post-recycled residue, residual into renewable energies. But there might be some projects here around biofuels and bio-waste that this council would support, and there might be other projects that you wouldn't support. We could come up with a project list on both of those sides. So my staff recommendation is that we just remove that item, and that as those projects come up, they individually become, come before you, or a piece of legislation, we could look at, is it nuanced enough to support it, and bring that one before you. So that's our staff recommendation.
Yeah, I support the staff recommendation for that, removal of that.
All right. So that's a lot it is before you, but you had already seen this twice, and I was trying to save you a third venture.
Do we have any questions or comments from the council?
I support the staff recommendations. They all sound good.
Yeah, it looks great. I feel pretty comfortable with everything.
Do we have any members of the public that would like to comment on this item?
We have one. Matt, go ahead, when, when you can, when you've come into it, I'm going to stop share so I can see you better. Okay, Matt, go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me? I can't tell if I can hear you.
Yep, okay, we can hear you, Matt. Go ahead.
Oh, thank you. So I'm Matt Simmons and I'm here representing Rocker. Colin Fisk couldn't make it tonight. So first off, I wanted to start by saying thank you for including so many of the things we suggested. These changes will help ensure that Arcata is supporting statewide legislation that will allow Arcata and the state to meet the challenges imposed by the climate crisis. That being said, with the two deletions that we suggested with regards to local control, I just wanted to make another pitch for why we suggested this. Rocker totally understands that the city has an interest in preserving local control. But in practice, this policy will lead the city to oppose much needed reforms such as streamlining affordable infill housing development, creating additional non vehicular transportation infrastructure, and green development standards. Simply because these policies come from the state doesn't mean that they should be opposed. We recommend that if the council wishes to oppose specific kinds of state mandated land use rules, the council should specify them. And that way you're not, you don't have this blanket statement in the legislative platform that is overbroad. California has a long history of allowing local control of land use policies, but these policies are often harmful because local politics center current property owners over everyone else in a way that can be harmful to our communities. For example, if you center current homeowners, you leave out the renters, future generations, and future members of your cities. Just one example of how this takes place, single family zoning, which is maybe impossible to build new multifamily housing in a lot of California, has led to our state's current housing crisis. And so, you know, just for an example, that's the kind of thing that we're hoping to change. The state legislature has recently begun to mildly correct this history. Recently passed bills like SB eight and SB nine do not, do take away some local control, but in doing so, they address the crisis, the current crisis. Arcata's legislative platform should not automatically oppose bills such as them in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any, anybody else, is that it?
I don't see any other public comment on this item.
Okay.
And I would say that we, that the city doesn't automatically oppose or support particular bills, especially when they come to housing. Past councils, and I assume it will be the same with this council, have been very selective. Sometimes we go along with the League of California Cities' recommendation on housing and sometimes we don't. It's our history.
I was just going to say, we could meet in the middle and just take it out. We neither support or oppose for two and three, I guess. We just don't, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, then it would just come to us.
Yeah.
On a case by case basis.
Right, exactly.
Yeah, like similar to the other one that we took out. And, you know, it, it sounds like there often is times where, yeah, we might support it and we might not. So taking it out does eliminate that blanket support, so.
Yeah, I think that's fine with me, that makes sense, I guess.
Yeah, that makes sense to me, that's a good solution, thank you.
I'm fine with that.
All right, so it sounds like we're going to go with what's in front of us with the staff recommendations and removing the language about local control. So do we have, do you need a minute, Karen? Okay.
Nope, I was going to put it in my notes here. Thank you.
Yeah, do we have a motion? Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I would say the motion would be to amend the legislative platform as discussed this evening.
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next, we have oral and written communications. This time is provided for people to address the council or submit written communications on matters not on the agenda. At the conclusion of all oral and written communications, the council may respond to statements. Any request that requires council action will be set by the council for a future agenda referred to staff. Speakers addressing the council may be limited to three minutes with a maximum of five minutes. A time limit on the overall length of oral communications may be imposed. So we will do three minutes. And do we have any members of the public that would like to comment on items not on tonight's agenda?
I see no further public comment tonight.
All right, moving on to council and staff reports. Do we, it looks like we have an update on the status of the safe parking program.
Yeah, so I'll just continue to update you. I did have a conversation with Arcata House Partnership this week, and they are still finalizing the proposal. We are going to be looking at a couple of sites. Right now, they do prefer a site that would be walking distance for their current annex in terms of support services for the program. And we are at this point just starting to look at the cost around and installation timelines around fencing and the two locations would have, would need electrical drops at them eventually. You know, whether or not we could start with something a little bit more rudimentary and build up to that, but we want to at least be able to provide the council what the options will be to at least have electrical on the site to at least support the staff services there. But we had a good discussion about sort of the goals of the project and the program and the need to sort of separate families from single individuals and the support and, and types of services that might be available on, I'll call each of the sides, you know, of that. But based on the need that they're seeing right now in our community. So moving forward, I will update you again at your next council meeting. I do know that people are really anxious for this program to get up and going, but I do still think it's going to take us a couple of months for Arcata House Partnership to be able to staff up and get the infrastructure in and ready to go in the program. But we will diligently work on it every week to try to be able to move it forward as quickly as we can on that. I do have just a couple other exciting updates. We did have two promotions in the city this last week. One is our Deputy Director of Environmental Services. That position has been accepted by Emily Benve, already within our organization. So she'll be moving into that position. And then we had a promotion to Sergeant, which has been accepted by Heidi Grothman. So we're excited to be promoting two people within our organization. And, and now we have two more positions to fill. So that's how that works.
Thank you. Do we have any reports from council?
I'll add in that the city manager and mayor and myself did attend the CalCity's annual conference. And it was a really good chance to learn, learn new things and network with people. So we had a good time.
Great. Did you have anything, Meredith? All right. Thanks, everybody, the meeting is adjourned.